We're live. Okay, welcome to the fifth installment of the city council's budget work sessions. Tonight, we are debuting our new city manager, Deborah Campbell, who we will more officially introduce when we do our five o'clock meeting, but this is your soft open.
Nice.
Soft open.
Just ease you in here.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Okay, we have three departments we're gonna hear from tonight. Do you guys have any particular order, or should we do it as shown on the agenda, which would be community economic development? Is that who you're ready for first? Uh huh, you are. All right, Sam, even though you're sitting the farthest back, you're up first.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to be the first staff person to make a report in front of our new city manager. And so you're gonna have to bear with me just a little bit. I'm Sam Powers. I'm the city's director of community and economic development, and thank you mayor and council for allowing us to be here today to talk about community and economic development. We are a very outwardly facing department. Almost all of our 40 employees interact on a daily basis with other citizens, with other departments, with the community at large, with state and federal agencies. When we, a number of years ago, kind of merged some different functions, community development, our economic development, our outdoor special events, we sat down and we talked about what we should kind of call our re-energized department. And one of the commonalities that we had was that everything that we do is really built around community. And so we said, well, if that's the case, we should put community first. And so we decided that we would call our newly reorganized department, Community and Economic Development, first, and it would be easy to remember because, again, we're putting community first in everything we do. And so that's a little short story about how we came up with that name. We've got four key strategic program areas that we work in, and a number of programs under that. You'll see strategic development, strategy and policy, community development, and cultural development. And there are many programmatic components under each one of those. Strategic development. The work that we do with our public-private partnerships, a good example is the Biltmore Avenue parking garage, the Aloft Hotel, and the affordable and workforce housing that's wrapped around it. The programs in our RAG-TIP development, our work in downtown management, and our innovation districts fall into strategic development. Strategy and policy analysis includes our work with partners such as the Economic Development Coalition, Buncombe County, the state of North Carolina, to help maintain and grow Asheville's vibrant and diverse economy. Our minority business program, the Mountain Community Capital Program, which we're rolling out, working with partners including Self-Help Credit Union, Mountain Biz Works, and Buncombe County is housed here. Community development works to help our community create economic mobility through building communities with affordable housing, reducing homelessness, and workforce development. The fourth focus area is cultural development. This includes over 300 outdoor special events permitted each year, our public art program, and the 1% for public art, and the U.S. Cellular Our department has numerous legal mandates and requirements, complex federal requirements, and our community development block grant and home programs require strenuous monitoring and reporting on how we steward the resources entrusted us as a community. Our work in community and economic development is driven by state statutory requirements, which require that we serve a public purpose. Economic development and affordable housing are statutorily public purposes in North Carolina. We list some key internal partners, but frankly, every department in the city is a key department and a partner in the work that we do across our service programs. Externally, again, almost every employee engages with citizens, local, state, and federal agencies on a daily basis. As you know, today, we're hearing from departments that have both general fund and enterprise fund budgets. Getting into the budget details, we'll talk first about the general fund. The largest driver that you see here is in our operating costs, and the biggest category of that is economic development incentives. These include catalytic projects such as New Belgium, which has literally changed the face of the River Arts District over the past five years, GE Aviation, and Lenamar, which are advanced manufacturing projects, all in excess of $100 million each in new capital investment in the community, and hundreds of new manufacturing jobs. If you look at kind of the budget with the economic development encumbrances aside, the budget is more employee-driven, and I think that's what you've seen in other departments, at about 65% in salaries and fringes. In contracted services, the largest component is the scholarships for our KLS students at $50,000. Studies such as our housing market assessment, and our partnerships with the Economic Development Coalition, the Sports Commission, and our training budget. Those are the key drivers in the budget. Spending trends, again, are relatively stable. The operations costs have grown. However, the economic development encumbrances formerly lived in a non-departmental category, and they were moved into our departmental budget a couple of years ago. If you look at community development, it's really important to note that it's a complex set of funding, primarily driven, and I think the takeaway is that it largely comes from federal and state sources. I think most of us are familiar with our community development block grant program. Our home program is a regional affordable housing consortium. The continuum of care is the work that we do in homelessness prevention and reduction. And lastly, the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund is the only one of these that we've mentioned that comes from the city's general fund. We have seven employees who are doing this important work in applying for, managing, monitoring, and complying with our funding, our federal funding, that's outgoing to the community. And again, I would note that the challenge you'll hear about later is the stability of federal funding. The U.S. Cellular Center is our enterprise fund. It is Asheville's civic space. Revenues, we're pleased to report, have continuously grown, and most currently are at $4.3 million. With 22 employees, we're really proud of the work that the Civic Center staff does to grow revenues. Our general fund support has not had to increase in the last 10 years, and the fact that the facility is beating budget is, I think, worth noting. The one other note I would have to you is, unlike a lot of programs, the U.S. Cellular Center depends on outside promoters, and so there's a lot of volatility in how we would predict and budget for future years. We have a few events, just like the really successful Christmas Jam that just took place, that we know happens year in and year out, and we hope continues for a long time for both the facility and the work that it's doing in the community. But a lot of the programming, really, we only know 90 to 120 days out when that programming is being scheduled. And so a downturn in the economy could certainly change things, but we feel, you know, that we're in a really, really good place. Budget changes, again, we've mentioned those, moving the incentives into the economic development budget, and the increasing successful financial performance of the U.S. Cellular Center.
Sam, can you actually go back to the bar graph slide?
Sure.
Yeah, so maybe other people had questions about this. So my question about this was, why is our general, why is the, in each of these years, the bar on the right so much more than the bar on the left? Why is our general fund transfer so much greater than the actual operating expenses?
We budget each year, and Tony may have to help me a little with this. We actually budget pretty much the same amount and half for a number of years, and what has, a few things have happened.
But Sam, you've got capital on the right-hand side. Don't you have capital in that?
I mean, the general fund report-
The general fund support-
Would include capital expenditures and not expenses.
Say that one more time.
So here, it looks like we're spending more money on the U.S. Cellular Center than its annual expenses, which wouldn't make any sense, unless we're also spending money on capital investments.
We are spending money on capital. We've got really, we've got three areas, really, four areas, where the budget is comprised of. We have, obviously, revenues that come from outside sources. For at least the last 10 years or so, the city has budgeted about $390,000 in general fund support for operating, and the city has budgeted $400,000 in capital improvements. And back in 2012, I think it was, when we started the improvement program, we did a debt issuance, and so a lot of the, a lot of the capital money has gone for debt service. As the years of the debt service, you know, are going by, the debt service payments are increasing, and we're gaining the ability to have more-
So operationally, it's pretty close to breaking even at this point for the first time in its history.
Actually, this year, a couple of other things I would note. When we moved to living wages for our employees, we have, the largest by far percentage of employees that we have are temporary seasonal employees, and so they're all being paid at a minimum of $13 an hour. That changed a good bit of what we were doing. We've moved away from a lot of contracted services and are trying to do a lot more of those in-house. And then the last thing, which is significant, is that, I don't know exactly whether it's two years or three years ago, we have a number of services that are provided by the city's general fund, our finance department services, our payroll, our IT, our legal services, all of those kinds of things that are being done in the general fund with other departments were done for the U.S. Cellular Center. And we moved a few years ago to an indirect cost allocation, and so all of those are being charged back to the facility. And what I would say is, even with those factors, even with the indirect cost allocation, the change in salaries, and some of the other expenses we've had, this year, we pretty much would not have required any general fund transfer in any of those areas. So the ability that we've done to improve the performances and the bookings of the building with the renovations that have taken place have been pretty amazing.
And I'll just note, too, just sitting on the board, I'm sorry, Matt.
Yeah, I was just gonna-
Go ahead, please.
I was just gonna say, Chris Corl should stand to take a bow.
Is he here?
He's here.
Well done, well done.
Yeah, but serving as liaison, it's pretty amazing every month to see what's booked, and just the diversity of what is coming into the Cellular Center. It's not just sports, it's other things. And you all are doing an incredible staff, incredible job, Chris, in terms of just being able to deal with all this stuff that's coming through it. And of course, they would like to remind me and remind council, and I will do so, and I'll do it on TV as well, that there are gonna probably be some capital requests coming down the pike as well, to make sure they're still able to be doing all of that. So let everybody know on the board, Chris, that I said that.
Well, so should this slide have a footnote or something that explains that the delta between the blue bar and the light green bar, because it-
We can certainly do that.
That it's capital.
Yep, I'll follow up with Tony and-
I mean, if, in fact, that's accurate, that it's capital and/or debt service, that we're, that's the difference maker at this point.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think, too, just Sam on this as well, just going forward, you know, there are, again, having a service liaison, there are a lot of projects capital intensive that are, that are on the Cellular Center's kind of, you know, desire to get done, that will be coming to us, that, you know-
We made great progress, council, as in, the council's been supportive, but since you've allowed me this one little guilty pleasure, you know, one of the concerns that really keeps, I think, everyone awake at night who works there, is if something were to happen, and I think maybe it was last year, or two years ago, just before the Christmas Jam started, we had one of our condenser units had a malfunction, and water almost came onto the stage, and that would not have been really a good thing, again, for the community-
Unless it's a Beyonce concert, but yeah.
Would have not been good for the community organizations that benefit from that concert, and it would have been good for the people who, you know, attend the, and look forward to it every year. But, yeah, lots of, lots of, again, lots of deferred maintenance, and we're making great progress with council's help, but there's a lot of work still to be We could move on. I'm almost done. Departmental challenges, consistent with those of many other municipal governments. The work that's done through our community development program is funded administratively and programmatically through federal and state funding. Each budget year in the federal government, there's a push to eliminate community development block grant funding. It's always been turned back. There's great bipartisan support, but it's always a threat. And again, when you look at how much we do with our outside agencies in those areas, it would be really traumatic if that was to ever go away, and we always have to be, I think, mindful of that. The capacity to meet our programmatic needs with existing staff, as we've noted, we're very outwardly facing over 300 events a year that we're processing. The city's public art program, our work with small businesses and their business associations. The capacity to meet city programming needs and city council strategic goals is very challenging with the existing staff resources we've got. The continuing housing affordability shortage, we're all aware of what we're working on, including the city's high-impact sites. You're gonna hear about those tonight. Our Klingman and Hilliard project that we're excited is moving forward, our Cedar Hill project, our potential Oak Hill project that council just allowed us to move forward with an RFD with Homeward Bound. The need for building mixed income, mixed-use communities that support all of our residents continues to just increase dramatically. We have, lastly, I will say, something that we don't hear a lot about, but I think it's important. We have a lack of available industrial sites. That's important to note because our advanced manufacturing jobs pay really well, and they're very capital investment intensive. They're important to maintain and grow a diverse and thriving economy. And if you'll refer back again to New Belgium, GE Aviation, and Lenamar, both, all three of those are almost half a billion dollars in private investment in our community. And, you know, the fact is, we really don't have a whole lot of additional places for projects like that to go. Our goals continue to work within the innovation districts to grow capital investment, work with other departments to help this, and to work on affordable housing. You heard last meeting about the disparity study. The recommendations will require significant cross-departmental effort if we expect to confront the findings of that report, to continue the upward growth in revenue and downward trend in general fund support of the U.S. Cellular Center, and to move forward with renovations at Thomas Wolf. Those really are the, what I would point out to you, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
So, Sam, the economic development, $100,000. How do we evaluate the effectiveness of that contribution? It's my understanding that that goes to the chamber?
It does. Well, it's divided into two parts.
Okay.
So going from memory, $60,000 goes to, through the chamber, for general support of the Economic Development Coalition. We have a contract every year. It's a general support contract. And $40,000 is part of council's multi-year commitment to the Five by Five campaign. They may have a different name, but I still call it the Five by Five. It's the capital campaign for the private portion of funding for the EDC. And council made a multi-year commitment, I think, of $100,000 over five years. And so I think, I can't remember if, I think this year or this coming budget year would be the last year of that commitment. And that's how it's broken down into the two phases.
And so we don't really have any metrics that we apply to that, the $60,000 or-
We have a general metrics. We, it, the contract with the EDC, like a lot of things, has moved around. At one point, it was non-departmental. It moved into community development before community development was part of economic development. We had a contract similar to the contract that we have with CDVG recipients. We did that for a couple of years, and then we moved more to just a general underwriting, and they report out on their metrics. But in terms of specific benchmarks, there are not specific benchmarks.
And how much is Buncombe County participating in the Economic Development Coalition?
They do, but I don't, I can get you that information. I don't know what that is. It's decreased. I think we were probably aware that, you know, the amount of contributions from the county to the EDC decreased a couple of years ago. I don't know. Do you think it's zero?
I think it's zero this year.
I don't know.
And so, I mean, I guess-
We can certainly get the answer to that question.
I guess that, for me, you know, again, where are the new jobs being, you know, developed?
Right.
And is it in the city, and is that proportionate to our contribution? So I'd like to kind of relook at that. And this, I'd have the same question. I put a request in through Deborah on the $40,000?
Forty-five.
Forty-five thousand, I'm sorry, for the sports commission. I'd like to understand the P&Ls of all the-
And we can do that.
-sporting functions that come through the sports commission, and how that helps or doesn't help the U.S. Cellular Center, because, again, I know that Buncombe County is not participating in that either. So-
I think they, they actually have done a contract in, like, very specifically targeted to the Southern Conference Basketball Tournament, I think. But, yeah, we are, we can, we wanted to get through this past weekend with the Christmas Jam, but we've got that information.
Okay.
And we can, we can put that together for the city manager to share with council on the events that have come through, you know, in conjunction with the sports commission. And I can, I can certainly go back, and we can reconfirm what, how, what the different sources and levels of funds for the EDC are.
Thank you.
We, there, yeah, and I don't know how you, I mean, Gwen, just as a, just because this was sent to me for the Fed Cup press conference, the Fed Cup itself, last year, had $3.5 million direct spending in the community, and my guess is most of that was in Asheville, since the event was in Asheville. I don't, I guess I don't know that for sure, but, and the sports commission, I think, was a key piece of that. So it's-
Yeah, but again, I guess I continue to go back to, there's the community, you know, there's the wider Asheville, and then there's the government of Asheville, and-
And we can certainly get that information for you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a couple of questions. So the economic incentives, these, these are, these are funds that we have, I think you used the word encumbered.
That's correct.
They may or may not necessarily get paid out in this year, but they are set aside and encumbered, and-
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. What we do is, once council, you know, as tonight, with a public hearing for a project, once that project becomes approved by city council, we work with the budget staff, and the full amount of the incentives basically is encumbered, and we know what is projected on a year-by-year basis to be paid out based on the performance contract. And so we have some idea cumulatively of, in any one year, what we think the combined payments would be. You know, we're in, we're in the process now of the New Belgium project and the GE Aviation, and a couple of smaller ones. Some of them have not requested, you know, and if they're not, if somehow they don't meet the performance, they would not be paid, according to the contract. But in terms of encumbering it, you know, to make sure it's available for payment, that's, that's what we do.
And how many do we have, how many economic incentive packages do we have at state?
Not a lot. I can get that information. We've got it, I think it's actually online. But there are probably six or seven.
Okay. Everything from, like, the-
New Belgium to Highland Brewing.
To the brewer people right down here on Charlotte Street. What are they, White Labs?
White Labs, yep. And that one's a little different, just to be honest, because that one is, that was one of the ones where there's really no cash, right? What we're, what we're doing with new, with, with White Labs is, we made a below-market lease available, and in return, they are taking that building that was not taxable and was being used, really, for storage, and have invested at least $8 million in upfitting the building. And then at the end of the five-year term, they will pay us 80% of the current fair market value. And so in some ways, it's actually a reverse incentive deal. We would have money coming in-
Right.
On that one. And that one's a little different than most, but it's, it stretched our boundaries a little bit, and certainly in a good way, in that there is, there was no cash outlay for the city.
So Sam, just, department, the departmental goals, what you have at the end, and I realize, you know, there's, not everything can be every kind of goal here, but, you know, one of the things that seems to be missing to me, just offhand, is like jobs, right? What we're talking about here, and there's been a lot of discussion we have in the city. Given that we have one of the lowest unemployment rates in the counties, he may, or, excuse me, the state, it may seem odd to be pushing this, but we hear a lot about concerns that wages are too low here relative to the cost of living. And so in terms of what we're doing as the city, as well as kind of broader efforts, can you tell us, or tell the public, like, what, what, what are we doing here to attract entities, whether that is economic incentives, or whether that is kind of working with them directly to see what the barriers are to, to, to increase jobs and increase wages? What are we doing to address that?
Sure. That, that's a great question. You know, and the elevator speech answer to that question, which I believe is accurate, and goes back to the vice mayor's comment. The county is the primary economic development organization for us. We all, whether we live in the city, or Black Mountain, or wherever we live, we're part of Buncombe County. And so the primary responsibility for recruitment, for marketing, for existing industry expansion and retention falls to the EDC. And again, as a, as a county resident, we're all a part of that contract, you know, that, that is, is in place. Where the city is involved is where we can add value. And we do, we do that in a number of ways. If there's a project comes along, and it's within the city, we'll look to see, in the case of White Labs, if there might be a site that we could make available. But in general, it's going to be public infrastructure where we can have the greatest benefit. And if you look at New Belgium, the Greenway connector, and the stormwater management, and the street improvements, and the public parking, all of the things that we've done to add value to that project, and all of those were actually public improvements. None of those really, you know, were improvements that would benefit New Belgium. They're all public, public, public benefits for that.
And Sam, how effective do you think, or do we think, the EDC has been as it relates to bringing in higher wage jobs? Because, again, you know, we're putting words there, we understand it's an outside entity, but in terms of, like, effectiveness, to go back to the vice mayor's question a little earlier, how, what is our perspective on that?
I would, here's what I would say professionally, if I can figure out how to go back. Considering the lack of available product, considering the lack of available greenfield or brownfield sites that we have for new or substantial expansion of existing manufacturing, I think we do a really good job. We don't have the topography that a Charlotte, or a Greenville, or a Johnson City, Tennessee has. It's expensive to do the topography. The New Belgium site, we were extremely fortunate that we had a corporate citizen that was interested in working on a brownfield site to do that project. If you think of GE Aviation, the complexity of GE Aviation, where they wanted to expand, and there was no room to expand, and literally, in this case- and there was no room to expand and literally in this case, the county came in as a project manager and said to an existing business next door, "We'll buy you and build you a new facility somewhere else if you will partner with us to do that." Extremely complicated. And, and, and we were fortunate again that the, the trucking company, Old Dominion, was willing to examine that and ultimately allowed, you know, themselves to, to find a different location so we could build a new building directly adjacent to the existing facility for GE Aviation. But if you start looking around, especially in the city limits, it's really challenging. We, you know, there's a couple of, of small sites kind of on the west side of town, but existing sites in the city. And that's one of the reasons why we've said, from our last comprehensive plan into the one, you know, that, that we're, that we're moving forward with now, preserving and maintaining industrialized property is important to us.
And I, I would add, just being involved in a number of these, not as many as you, Sam, but the EDC's facilitation of the, getting the educators lined up, because right now we're at the problem where these jobs exist, but we don't have employees trained and ready to fill them. And that, so, I almost feel like the issue now is not creating so many new jobs, it's really getting people prepared to take, take on existing jobs. And that requires getting AV Tech and UNC Asheville and even high schools all lined up to be able to prepare people. And that's, anytime we do one of these big ones, that's always part of the conversation, who's going to be able to train them? Who's going to develop the program? AV Tech has, they're, you know, they have a program right now where they actually will cater, they will create a program specifically for Lenimar or GE Aviation, and they do. To me, that's where the EDC has been very helpful, to bring together all those partners to be able to build the package you need to, to make it successful.
North Carolina as a whole, you know, is, is, has been for, for many, many years been considered a national leader in terms of workforce development programs through the community college system. The ability to do customized training, to either send employees to a different location where an existing facility may be, or to send someone who would come back and train the trainers. All of those kinds of customized training programs have been really, really successful. But, but Mayor, you're exactly right. The, the combination of low unemployment and increasingly higher skilled jobs that, that need to be filled, we're going to continue to have to look at new ways to do that. GE Aviation, for example, has reached out directly to one of the high schools and said, "Let's start an apprentice program." And, you know, they're, they're working with, with high school students who are getting their degree, their high school degree and then moving directly into the, to the workforce in jobs that probably start at about $55,000 a year.
So, one, one final question just on this. So, just to, to underscore this, the conversation we have here with the mayor, is, is the view then, because again, we, we always hear issues about wages are not high enough in the city. And, and what do we do about that, right? There's not, you know, sometimes I'll hear that there's not good jobs out there. And when you talk to some manufacturing companies around here, they say we can't find the human capital or the hu, the folks, you know, that's a technical term, right? People to actually fill these jobs. So, from your end, as someone who's a professional in this, is that, is that kind of where you see that it's really more of an issue of jobs being here that people either are not trained for or don't want to take versus the need to bring in new jobs elsewhere to, to raise wages?
Yeah, again, that's, that's a great question. And, you know, it's, a lot of times, it, it, it really goes to family history. I think probably everybody sitting behind the desk up there has some desire, if you have children, for your children to get a college education. You know, that's been instilled in folks for a long, long time. And, you know, there are a number of jobs, again, either with specific certificate programs, community college education, apprenticeships that, that pay really, really well, that have a lot of the, the same educational outcomes that, that you would have with a four-year degree. But it's, there's a little bit of a, a generational aspect of, of folks wanting their children to go to college. And I think, you know, that's one of the things that, that we as a community need to do, and that is to help all of our folks understand that regardless of your interest, there is an educational pathway and a career pathway for you that can lead to meaningful employment and being able to, to have what you need to be successful in our community. And I think we've all got to, to continue to, to try really hard to help our, our, our young folks understand that. I, I would be remiss if I, if I didn't say, our KALA program, again, has done a really good job. While it primarily focuses on helping students go to post-secondary education, Erica is doing a great job. She's working closely with the Workforce Development Board. We're looking at all kinds of options that how, you know, what we might be able to do in the future to help KALA and, and folks who are interested in the KALA program expand their options. The challenge with that again is the, the staff capacity to take on, you know, those kinds of additional responsibilities.
Just a couple anecdotes. The last major, the, the Canadian HVAC company that's going to locate...
Just outside the city limits.
Just outside, well, we kind of wrap around it in, in the Inca campus. One of the comments they made in making their decision to locate here, and they're pretty much all engineers, they said, "Well, we, we liked that you weren't a Greenville, South Carolina where you have so many large companies competing for the same workforce." That those, those, you know, those companies sort of sucked the oxygen out of the room and they had some opportunity to leverage our workforce, which I thought was interesting. But to contrast that, before the HB2 legislation that scared off a lot of tech companies, we did have a very large tech company interested in Asheville that wanted to look at a, locating an office here that would eventually end up with around 500 employees. And it was massive and really would have opened us up in the tech sector even more. And they were, you know, they were very worried, sort of wringing their hands about, about the employee base. Could they, they would have to draw all the way to Knoxville and Greenville and Johnson City because we don't have Division One universities here. We don't have quite, we're not generating quite the population you might see to support that big of a company. So, I think in some ways, you know, it's a little, we've kind of, you know, challenge on both ends of it. But, but the good news is that a lot of economic development now, since it's happening in urban, more in urban areas than anywhere else, is a lot about placemaking. Companies can make choices about where they want to be and we're, you know, we're obviously a desirable community to live in and so employees like that, employers want to make employees happy. So, I think that works very much in our favor. We just have to continue to work on the partnerships about, through job training and...
And, and if you look at our, our labor draw area, where the, the market area where employees come, you know, it reaches all the way up into Gansy and Mitchell County. And so, folks there have a long history of commuting. I'm sure that there would be interest on their part if there were jobs closer to home. But I think again, the changing dynamic that we're seeing is more and more jobs are being created in urban areas and, you know, to some extent, that's part of the challenge that, that you heard and that Kathy Ball addressed, and that is, we have this dramatic increase in daytime population. And a lot of that, again, I, I see it every day, are, are folks coming in to work, you know, in the medical field and manufacturing, not just in, you know, in retail. And so, I think that's going to continue. But I think figuring out ways to, to, to be accommodating and to, to have locations for these companies is, is going to be something that we're going to have to figure out how to do.
Esther, I've got one. It's not, it's not directly related to this, but you might disappear if I don't ask it. So, related to the affordable housing crisis is the homelessness?
Yes.
Our homeless population? And I'm just curious if you can give us a little report on how, how we did this past weekend, code purple? Do we have enough places for people to go?
We, we, I don't know if Brian Hussey's in here or not. We continue to work closely. Brian, I think, is doing a really good job. I, I think while we have, you know, a combination of folks who will refuse to, to, to go inside and folks who will, the shelters are a challenge. We've got some meetings that we're going to have in the next week to look at potentially additional options of, of what we can do when these code purple situations come up. Actually, I said, I think we've got a meeting Friday, an internal meeting to talk about what potential options we can have. It's going to continue to be a challenge.
I, I know one of the, well, last winter, at least a couple of the shelters announced that they would no longer be taking men and including, I think, the rescue mission. And one, again, my understanding is one of the solutions that was, that they put on the table was, well, if you can give us an officer all night, because they're concerned about safety, just, this is obviously just me speaking, my guess is there's not an enormous amount of crime on cold nights and I would love for us to look at, maybe we could spare an officer to, to be in those places.
Do you think you guys could take a look at that issue at HCD? I'm just wondering because I don't, you know, we have the homeless advisory task force, but I don't, I, I'm a little concerned about the disconnect there with the staff working there and not, not having the connection with HCD.
I'd be happy for us to look at it if there's a set of recommendations or if, if, if the, if the shelters are coming to the city with a proposal and, and you all need some recommendations.
It's a challenge and that is one of the things we hear. And I think, you know, one of the things that we would want to do is stick in to make sure we include the county in those discussions. You know, it's, as, you know, is the sheriff's department, do they have capacity?
Sure. It's great.
The, the DSS folks really, you know, that's one of the primary goals of, of county is Health and Human Services. And so, I think any conversation we have, we would want to, to include them. There's a little bit of a disconnect and I'm really quickly getting out of my area of knowledge, but one of the, one of the things that I think is a little bit of a challenge if we use the sheriff's department, for example, is if for some reason the, you know, and the unfortunate event that there might be an arrest, I think the police, the, the APD folks feel like they're still going to have to be called in.
Yeah.
And so, you know, they're, they're, they're kind of having to double dip. Either you're working with APD or if you, if somehow we're able to, you know, to use the sheriff's department and there's some sort of, of an arrest, the, the city is still going to have to, the city police department's still going to have to be involved. So, I don't know that there's a, an easy answer, but we can certainly have the conversation and we're aware of it.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
All right, next, Ken, transportation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Ken Putnam. I'm the Transportation Department Director. The core services for, the Transportation Department include these items. From a traffic safety standpoint, they include the pavement markings, signs, traffic signals and flashers and streetlights. We also include in the core services, on-street parking and then the transit daily operations. Other services that the Transportation Department provides include project review, temporary street sidewalk closures, speed limit studies, traffic calming, pedestrian and bike planning, and also greenway planning. The Transportation Department is basically funded by three different sources. It's the General Fund, the Transit Enterprise Fund, and also the Parking Enterprise Fund. Under the Transit Enterprise Fund, the programs that that supports are transit planning, the paratransit services, transit daily operations, and also the transit management contract. The revenue sources in the Transit Enterprise Fund include federal grants, state grants, the General Fund, and also the Parking Enterprise Fund. Under the Parking Services for the Parking Enterprise Fund, we provide services for on-street parking, off-street parking, and also the parking garages. And the off-street parking includes surface parking lots that we have available for monthly parking opportunities for the public. Mandates and legal requirements, we, Transportation Department, we follow the North Carolina general statutes, we follow the city ordinances. Also, from a traffic engineering perspective, the manual on uniform traffic control devices is a document that is federally recognized, federally produced, and all the states and all communities use this document so that there's consistency across the states and even the United States as far as traffic control devices go. And then another mandate is whatever grant funding requirements that we have to follow. Key partners. Key partners, again, just as previously been said by the other departments, internally, it's, we really work closely with all the departments, but we spend quite a bit of time working with public works and capital projects. The North Carolina Department of Transportation is a key partner. And a couple of examples there is the I-26 Connector Project Working Group that's been in existence for two and a half years. And also, since we have the distinction of being number one in pedestrian and bicycle crashes, we work closely with the local division office and we have a work group that we meet on a regular basis, typically monthly, to just talk about pedestrian and bicycle improvements and any and all crashes that have come up in the most recent time period. A good example was the unfortunate crash that occurred on Fairview Road a couple of years ago with the two children that were killed as they were trying to cross the street. And as a result of that partnership, the DOT and the city created a project that we funded half of, they funded half of, to build a sidewalk all the way from Oakley School all the way down Fairview Road to Swanon Oa River Road. And that project is just about finished now. Their, the last gap or part they're working on is the sidewalk over the bridge for the Southern Aero Track. And then another key partner we have is the Transit Management Company. The General Fund budget for this year is $2.6 million. Again, we're very similar to the other departments in that it's heavily on the side of salaries and benefits. It's skewed a little bit because operating costs, although it shows $1.5 million, a million dollars of that is, is for the streetlights and most of that money goes for the electric bill for that. Budget drivers that we have include training, materials, a transfer to the grant fund and contracted services, and then the street lighting that I just mentioned at, at $1 million. On the material side, that money is used to buy signs and sign blanks, signposts, the thermoplastic pavement marking material that we use, paint material, traffic signal parts, and also bike corral parts or materials. On the contracted services, these are specialized contracts that we have. We have contracts for traffic counts, the streetlight repair when it's needed, traffic signal maintenance, traffic signal design, paint contract, the MPO dues, and a new one that we've added is a pilot program for corridor studies. And the one that we're going to be doing is on Tunnel Road from Bo-Ketcher down to South Center Road.
Ken, I've got a quick question here.
Yes.
So, we've been having conversations at PED about transferring the streetlights back to Duke Energy. Do we, does anybody in the room know that if that happens, does that bill go away or do we still pay that bill?
We would still have a bill. And what we're trying to do in the, in the new protocol for Duke Power is if we were to ask them to put up a new streetlight on a, say, for example, road that we've just taken over or for a need, a citizen is identified, the Duke Power goes out and puts the light up and then sends us a monthly bill, similar to if you added an area light to your home, you would pay like an extra $10 a month. And that's what we're going towards. That's the, that's most ideal. We still own in the neighborhood of 10,000 streetlights. And until that program is fully paid back, Duke Power does not want to entertain taking those over yet.
But even after we transfer them, assuming we do transfer those lights back to Duke at some point?
Yes.
Really, we would be, just be saving the maintenance costs, not the power bill?
That's exactly right. We would not have to have the people or the spare parts on hand. Duke Power would take care of it for us. Prior, your spending trends for the General Fund, you can see they basically remained relatively flat. And on the Transit Fund, it's, the grand total for this year is $8.5 billion. And this is the first full year of our new business model, the turnkey model that we've gone to where we're basically paying a flat fee for the Transit Management Contract plus an hourly fee for the revenue hours that they're on the street. hourly fee for the revenue hours that they're on the street. The Transit Fund, your trends for the prior year, what this graph is really trying to highlight are the revenue sources, and as you can see with that kind of light green color, that's the General Fund support, and you can see, especially in fiscal year 17, 18, that that has grown significantly. And to mitigate that, what we've done this year is increased the Parking Fund support for this year. One of the driving factors on this is, on the federal grant side of the ledger, there was a long time when the total amount of money was shared by Buncombe County and, or Henderson County and Asheville, and now there's more people that are sharing the same amount of funds, so our monies are coming down. We're in a transition period on that, and the biggest effect for us is, and this is called the 5307 Funds, the biggest impact will be that we'll still have about the same amount of money that we've always had for the operating expenses, but we will no longer be able to tap that money for capital projects, and we'll have to look at other funds to do that. And so far, we've been fortunate in doing that.
So, Ken, I've got a question on this slide too, and then two slides down from this. I'm not, so the, the lightest color there is the amount of money that's transferred from the Parking Fund to support transit, is that right?
Yes.
So, that, the size of that bar has not changed, doesn't look like it's changed significantly over, over this period of time, but, but we know it has. In fact, it's almost tripled, I think. So, I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if the bar graph is, is not, is not fully reflecting that increase. And then the same thing, again, two slides down, showing it from the parking side perspective, it, the bar shows about the same, but has it almost tripled in five years?
Well, I think, now, we'd have to, I think for the past four or five years, we've been transferring roughly $600,000 a year.
It's going to increase next year.
But now, but, well, if you, so, maybe go to the, go to your next slide, you've got, transfer to transit is 1.5 million.
Right, that's for this current year, and this is showing the last five years.
Okay, I guess maybe it's gone up, maybe it's only gone up a couple hundred, okay, all right.
But, but you're, you're right, you're right. There were several years ago when that amount of money was in the $200,000 range.
Right.
But it's been in the $600,000 range.
Okay, for several years, okay.
Several years.
All right, great.
But that's a good point. And then in the Parking Fund budget for this year, it's right at $7 million, and the biggest difference you can see is this transfer to transit of roughly $900,000 more than what we had previously been doing.
And are we maxing that out still? I mean, are we, are we maxing out what we can transfer from parking to transit? Because we need some more money for transit.
I think we are maxing it out, but, and I will say that we are on track, that new revenue that you approved for this year, we're on track so far through November that we're meeting that need.
Yeah, and I do want to just remind us that that actually wasn't even, that wasn't new revenue to transit, it was new revenue from the Parking Fund, but it did just displace General Fund dollars, so it, it wasn't like we added $900,000 to, right? I mean, we took General Fund money and took it away and replaced it with Parking Fund money, so.
Yes.
Just, just so that we remember that we did that.
And then, on the Parking Fund spending trends, we're still seeing a steady growth in the revenue. The bump from fiscal year 17 up to fiscal year 18 is primarily the, the money that was set aside for the parking meter replacement, and most of that has been done now, and I think I've had a couple of questions from council members about the ability to still use passport parking, and now there are stickers on the meters that clarify that. So, that was a good sign, because now they're all basically synced, and it's working well. We have seen a decrease in the number of transactions, which was, which we expected, but as far as passport parking is concerned, they're still happy with the relationship we have, because they now have our siteation management contract. We have seen a much greater increase in credit card usage across the board, so fewer people now are putting in the quarters, and I think that trend is going to continue, and we'll be able to give regular updates to you to see how, how well that's working. And the other thing, as far as future expenses go, it doesn't really show on this graph, but future expenses, that we've got three garages now that have some life on them, with the oldest one being a Civic Center Garage at 42 years old, and we've, we've had structural analysis completed on all three of the garages to do that, and we're starting to implement over the next several years, plans to be able to increase those lives up to as many as 30 years. The good news was, on the reports that we got, for the age of our garages, they were in pretty good shape as far as the structural analysis goes, and that's just a testimony of, of the past work that the Parking Services Manager had been putting into routine maintenance, and we're going to continue that as well. As far as current year budget changes, we added funding, and I showed in a previous slide, the $100,000 to add greenways to the pedestrian and the ADA Transition Master Plan. We sent out just recently a request for qualifications, and we, they were due back in on December 3rd, so we're beginning to sort through those, and hopefully we'll have a consultant approved and ready to come to council for a contract in January, February this year. Also, we just mentioned the changes in the parking fee, garage fees, which basically was changed in the way that the first hour free was handled. The parking capital investments, mentioned that as far as the structural maintenance, and we're, we're starting to plan to start setting aside money to be able to take care of those. And thanks to council for approving a new position for a transit planner, and we now have that position filled. The individual's been here less than a month, but she's already starting to hit the road running, so that's great. And of course, this year is, as far as the, the budget goes for daily operations, this is the first year, the first full year of the transit service expansion that was approved a year or so ago. Department challenges, probably the number one challenge is funding to implement the Transit Master Plan that was recently approved. Like other departments, we're facing increasing construction costs. We'll see that really tested when we go out for the, the bids on the transit renovation, which will happen early next year. And this is an ongoing challenge that we're working on with several departments, including planning and, and public works, is to align the standard specifications, the detailed manual with the UDO, and also the comprehensive plans, so that we don't have conflicts in those, where it takes a lot of staff time on a, on a case-by-case basis to determine which is going to rule on a given project. And as far as department goals go, we want to, we want to continue to implement the multiple transportation plan. We're initiating the pedestrian, the ADA Transition and Greenway Master Plan. We're continuing the parking garage restoration projects, and then we're supporting the efforts to update the UDO and standard specs. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
So, Ken, this is, this is going to sound like kind of small compared to all the other stuff that you, that you have up there, but when I go out in the neighborhoods, the two things they always talk about the most is like speeding through their neighborhood, and like trucks cutting through their neighborhood. So, can you, for both of those things, I know you've addressed them in certain community meetings, but since this is being taped, and hopefully folks may be, may be watching this, can you talk to folks about what to do if they think there is speeding going on in their neighborhood, as well as, you know, if there are larger trucks that are, that are using neighborhood streets on sort of a no, where there's a no trucks sign?
Right. Yes, that's probably the number one request that our traffic engineer receives on a regular basis, is people are going too fast in my neighborhood, I'd like, I'd like a lower speed limit. That's the way it starts. And what we do, so we get these requests on a very regular basis, and our standard protocol is to initiate a traffic engineering study on that. And the first step to that is to put our traffic count tubes out on that street for a 72-hour period of time. So typically, we put them out on a Monday, we pick them up on a Friday, because we're looking at the period of time Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 72 consecutive hours. That will give us the traffic counts on that road, so we'll know what the three-day daily total would be. Also, we'll know what the, the speeds that they're traveling. So, obviously, it gives us a graph that we'll be able to even share, and we do share with the police department, to say, we know you can't be out here 24 hours a day, but what we've seen on this particular road, if you're out there on a Wednesday at 3:00 in the afternoon, it seems like speeding is worse. Then we take that information, and we then analyze it, we also go out and make sure that, we look at all the other factors on a given street to see if a lower speed limit would be warranted. And as you know, from time to time, we bring those requests to you for approval. And then once that's approved by council, and we get the signs up, then that speed limit is in effect. Depending on how those numbers shake up, it could also trigger us to go into the traffic calming policy. So, if indeed, if, if there are more than 1,000 vehicles a day on a given road, and that 85th percentile speed is greater than five miles over the speed limit, that could trigger the, the, the next step to look at traffic calming. And the only traffic calming technique that we have been using for the last several years are speed humps, or speed cushions, because that way we could cover more roads than with the, some of the other things about putting in bulb-out alleys and that sort of thing, it's a whole lot cheaper. So, we, and, and then council did give us a funding source for the traffic calming techniques, and, and we've got that, and that's working well, so we were able to catch up with our backlog list. Unfortunately, with the transition that we've had and losing as many people as I lost this year, including the traffic engineer, we've kind of gotten behind, so we do have a backlog again. And one of the challenges is that we'll start this whole process, we get to the point where we need the 60% petition sign, and then the person that initiated it has either moved, or no longer wants to be involved in it. Then we have to find someone else that would pick up the slack. That takes care of that, the speed limits and so forth. Now, as far as truck prohibitions, that was a little bit more complicated, because in order for someone to be given a ticket, they'd need to be caught in action. And, and you have to make sure that that truck was going all the way through the road and did not have a destination on the road. So, it makes it a little bit more difficult to, to catch those. But anytime that anybody wants us to do that, all we need is basically an email, and we'll initiate a study. We don't have to have a petition signed by all the residents to start the study. We'll do it with one individual request.
Thank you.
And I had a question. I know several years ago, our transit system got certified under the ISO 14,000, 14,001, maybe, certification, but that, that has now dropped. Is, do we have any plans to reinstitute that, or get recertified for that?
I think that, yes, we, we do. That'd be more of a long-term thing. It basically boiled down to the fact, we just did not have the capacity, the staff capacity to keep, keep it up. But, we are still, we are still doing it on our own.
Okay, so we're still meeting, we're still meeting the requirements of that certification, we're just not actually certified?
That, that's exactly right. And we also got to the point where with our new staff, they would have to go through that entire training again.
Right.
Which is fairly expensive and all, so we were just kind of delaying it for a while. But we're still keeping up with all of the requirements that we have. We don't want to lose that ground.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Last but not least, water resources.
Mayor, Councilman David Melton, the Director of Water Resources, and thank you for the opportunity to share some of this information tonight. I'm battling a cold, so you have to bear with me a little bit. The Water Resources Fund is a wholly enterprise fund. To give you a little background, we have about 22,000 acres protected watershed, rewater treatment plants, roughly 38 storage tanks, and around 1,700 miles of pipeline. We average about 20 million gallons a day that services about 60,000 service connections. So, a big, complicated water system. Some of the main core services that we provide, the first would be water treatment, because that's, at the core, that's what we're here for, is to make the water safe for each consumer. Then water maintenance comes right in behind it, keeping the water flowing and going where it needs to go. Then, of course, we have hydro maintenance, which is for public safety and fire safety. Then water line replacement and renewal, which is our reinvestment program back into the system. These are some of the other core services that are provided. These are provided across six divisions, which is water admin, engineering, production, maintenance, meter services, and customer services. These are some of our mandates and legal requirements that we have to follow. Some of the big ones are the, the North Carolina general statutes, and of course, our US EPA and North Carolina DEQ regulations. We're, we're pretty regulated from, from source to tap in, in everything we do. And of course, the last one, I'm sure everybody recognizes, the Sullivan Acts. These are some of our key external partners. Of course, we work closely with MSD, the other cities around the town, around our town, and the counties, and also Land of Sky, the River Lake, and the CBO. And as for internal partners, we, we work closely with just about every department in the city, either with them supporting us, or us supporting them. And one big support in this whole effort was our budget department, who got all this together and kept us on track.
David, I was a little, I was sort of surprised to see those last three, the Conservation Trust, CBO, and River Lake. Can you talk a little bit about the relationship with them?
The Conservation Trust is basically our permit for the watershed, everything that we do.
Oh, they're, they, they hold the easement.
That's right.
On the watershed, okay, I got that, that's good.
The watershed. Then, of course, we work with, with River Lake, with the Swananoa, the French Bald, and everything, because of the outflow from the reservoirs going in there, so that's a close partnership there. CBO, we haven't worked with quite as much lately, but they're still, still on our list.
I, I think, predating you, I think when we did some, we, we did an overhaul of our rates, and we did some planning about a multi-year rate making.
About the commercial.
And, and some issue on the, adjusting the commercial, and I think we did a big stakeholder input on that, so probably CBO is more representative of, like, commercial class of customers, industrial class of customers.
That's correct.
That they got, got input from on the rate-making adjustment.
That's right.
If I recall.
This is basically our budget as a whole. Our salaries and benefits are a little bit different from other departments. We're about 26% on salary and benefits. Our operating costs are around 29%, and our capital and debt take up the biggest portion, which is 45%. And I'll explain that just a little bit later. This is some of our budget drivers for our operating expenses. You can see that utility street cuts, electricity, and most electricity is for the plants that run 24/7, plus our pump stations. Chemical and lab supplies is a big driver, and also the materials to, to fix and maintain the water system.
Actually, sorry, you didn't mention the last one, the cost allocation charges. Can you explain that?
The cost allocation charges is basically what we pay for other city services, being wholly enterprise. We pay for finance, budget, and rent in the building, and so that's all basically our overhead.
I see, I see, all right. And the chemical and lab supplies, do we do all that testing in-house, or do we use outside labs?
A mix of both. The, the biggest portion of it, we do in-house, but there is certain tests that we have to form out to commercial labs. And some of that is because we don't have the ability to do it in-house, and other, the other part of that is like a checks and balances.
Sure.
Piece of it, where, where some of the, some of the lab procedures are checking on our lab procedures to kind of check and balance, to make sure we're in check.
And, and final question on the electricity, do I remember correctly that you're working with the Sustainability Office on looking at, looking for some, both renewable and efficiency options in the system?
We are, we are, and we actually follow the Duke Power load management for the plan. We are, we are, and we actually follow the power load management for the plants where we can, where we fill up our tanks during the day on off-peak and, and take advantage of that rate difference there as we can. Pump stations are a little bit harder because that's a hundred percent based on demand and predicting that's a nightmare.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, this is our spending trends for the last several years. You can see it's pretty flat. Revenues this past year are a little bit over, which is a good thing as long as it's close when it is. And a lot of that, the reason for that is, is we do make conservative revenue estimates and we've had increased development and a big increase in multifamily usage across, and then of course, we've had open positions throughout the department over the last couple of years.
That's an increase in the number of apartment units, condo units?
Mm-hmm.
And are those metered separately or no?
Most of them are, most of them are master metered, which we prefer to do it that way because it's a lot less maintenance for us.
I'd say any newer construction is definitely separate.
By, by policy now, yes.
Great.
As far as the budget changes, we see besides the difference in development and things like that would be based on our financial model and our model is reviewed at least annually, usually more, we look at it more than that throughout the year, but then we update it at a minimum of every five years. Department of Challenges, a lot of the challenge for us is balancing the investment in infrastructure while maintaining reasonable rates. We invest approximately about ten million dollars annually into our existing system through rehab and replacement projects that benefit existing customers now. So having that fine balance where we're, where we're staying sustainable, it's still not going up on rates, that would be to an unreasonable level, if that makes sense. These are some ongoing departmental goals we've had. The master planning project will be done later this month. The rate model was updated in June of this year, so those two are really, both being, with the rate model being finished and the master plan being closed, we'll finish both of these this year. Our four major neighborhood water line replacement projects, all of those should be finished this spring, then we'll have a whole new suit coming in behind them to take their place to move forward. Then the asset management, asset and project management software mutations went live in March, so we'll have a whole new set of goals going forward for next budget year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
What's our current water loss rate? I think when you and I, when you helped me with that presentation about a year and a half ago, it was around nineteen percent, is that still that right?
We're at about twenty-two percent.
Twenty-two, okay.
Right now, we had a little tick up and that's another presentation, but we're at about twenty-two percent, which really weighed heavily and with the, the big project we have with the North Fort Danner improvements, was really a big driver in getting this better bonding rating to get there because that was the sound financial management and the reduction in non-revenue water was the two things that really was kind of the home run for us to get the better bond rate going and probably saved us guessing about eight hundred thousand dollars just on interest.
And do we have a goal, a target for that non-revenue water loss?
We do, and going through the program, for us, million gallons a day is a lot more accurate, a lot more meaningful than a percentage because it depends on the math to get the percentage, but our goal is four million gallons a day presently, and we're about four, five right now, so we're kind of close and in on it. And a lot of, in the core, we've got leak detection, leak surveys, all of that kind of, those activities going in, plus the replacement projects are all, they're all tied together, work together for the non-revenue water program.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, there's one other attachment to your agenda, but it's just, so it's answering some questions that council had, but other than that, that concludes the presentations we have, so.
Is this the last one?
I'm trying to remember, do we have another one scheduled?
This is it.
I think this has been, I think this has been a really good, a good process and I don't, I don't know whether we'll plan on doing this kind of thing next year or maybe, but I, I think it's been good for the public and even council to hear this level of detail, so I know it's taken a lot of time from staff, but we, I, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, same thing.
Thanks for your work, putting it together. You know, I think for council to get educated about how we deal with the finances within each department and learn more about the detail on, on the function, how we're housing different programs, is very helpful. I do, I'm a, I'm a little bit concerned that this process was actually born out of an interest in getting a high level of community engagement in the budget process. I'm not sure we necessarily succeeded on that front. You know, we also had some community engagement meetings on the, on the budget and there were a few people at those, but I think, I think it's very difficult to respond to the community's request to be involved in the budgeting process and actually make that meaningfully happen. So I think we're trying to figure that out, we're trying to, we're trying to figure out how, what, what it is we can do on our part other than, of course, going through a typical budget process where folks can come to this chamber and speak on the budget, what, what we can do ahead of time to, to really engage the community in the budget process. We did go to Durham and learn a little bit about how they do theirs. Theirs is very different, they're cities and wards and they have collaborative process with the city, the county, and even the Department of Education, and they hold community meetings in each ward. It's a very different process, so it was kind of a little bit apples and oranges in terms of comparing it, but I think this is a good beginning to try to figure out how to do this differently, but I don't quite feel like we're, I feel like we haven't created a process yet that isn't going to result in some potential feeling on the part of the community when we get to June that they were left, they were left out and they didn't get their full say. Maybe they didn't understand how early we started it or how we did it, or we don't take public comment at these work sessions, rather we try to do these community meetings, which are, aren't always well-attended and they're not televised. Anyway, I'll shut up about that, I just was thinking about that on my way, way in today in terms of this exercise, because it took a lot of work, not for us so much, but for staff.
I wonder if we could ask Kate, well, Deborah's, yeah.
I'm sorry. You know, I hold very highly the transparency and the need for not only elected officials, but also the community to understand the budget process. I think the budget is probably the most single important thing that we do that helps us create a sense of a partnership and a level of accountability of how public resources are being spent and holds us accountable for ensuring that we are operating as efficiently as possible. Getting community buy-in and input though is always a challenge and communities across this country have the challenge of creating a process that meets people where they are, that relates to the budget, not saying, well, this is our process and you need to plug yourself into it. We've got to figure out multiple ways that we meet the needs of our residents and people in Asheville to get them engaged. And I think that we, we have, we are off to a good start, we will have a better start once we kind of debrief and understand and get feedback from the community about the various ways that we can engage them and that they want to be engaged. So, thank you.
Does anyone else have a? Okay, we were adjourned from this, we'll come back here at five o'clock. Thanks, boys.